Housing Trust Fund. Please state your name and your address.
Robert Berman, Hiram Lane. Member of the Town Council. Looking at the ordinance as is proposed, I see a major legal flaw. I'd like to point it out. According to what you published, it says the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee shall consist of the mayor, minority party council member, finance director, et cetera, et cetera. It also says the town manager and each of the members of the Town Council shall serve as non-voting official members of the committee. I'm surprised that's in there because I'd like to read Section 306 of the Town Charter. The council shall be the governing general legislative body of the town. The council shall exercise and perform all rights, powers, duties, and obligations of the town, except as may be assigned by this charter to some other office, board, or agency. Going further down. It's... The last separate paragraph in here. It says that no member of the Town Council can serve on any other appointed or elected body. How can you have this in that ordinance? When the charter specifically says council cannot serve on anything else? 2006, rather than 2005 or 2006, the then-mayor Sid Schulman established building committees in the town, ignoring the charter, and he put council members on every building committee. After 2007 election, this was pointed out to him, and the town attorney rendered an opinion saying that because all those town, all those building committees have been illegally established, what had to happen was that the new members of the town building committees for each of the schools had to ratify all actions having been taken by the illegal committees. I think it's important that you clear this matter up before this ordinance goes any further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come right up if you'd like to speak on the Housing Trust Fund, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Generally, Article 5, Section 15-52-15-58. We have a public hearing in session for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. These are amendments to the current ordinance.
Madam Mayor?
Counsel McCleary?
A move that we close the public hearing?
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Cooper and Counselor Lloyd. Any objections to closing the public hearing? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. The public hearing is now closed. We will start with the main portion of our agenda. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the love of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All.
All right. Welcome to those who came in person and online. Good evening. Good evening. We have all members accounted for, present, online and in the room, with the exception of Counselor Waterhouse. Next up, we have announcements and presentations. Clerk of Counsel, please confirm. We do not have any presentations or announcements, to my knowledge. Excellent. Moving right into citizen statements and petitions. You have three minutes to state your name, your address, and address this body. And please, there is a rule, no personal attacks. So please come on up. Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to address this council.
Robert Berman, Hiram Lane. During the public hearing, I misstated what section of the charter it was. It's Section 305. And it says during the term for which he or she is elected, no member of the council shall hold any other office, elected or appointed, enter under the Town of Bloomfield, nor shall any member of the council serve as a member of the Charter Revision Commission of the Town of Bloomfield. I think that's very clear. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Green, and I'm here from Manor House Apartment. And I think you guys know what's going on at Manor House. You know, we're having a lot of problem with landlords. Mold, you name it, is happening. And we don't seem to be getting anywhere with that. You know, we came to several meetings, but most of those meetings was for rent control. You know, so we want to know what the Town Council, how you guys can help us. We really need someone to reach out because people are getting discouraged. And you know, they're really willing to just accept anything. So...
Mayor? Through you to the town manager, could we ask the Health Department, Amy, to really crack down on this? Because this has been going on for two years. I remember in 2022 or 2021, I met with the folks at the Manor House at Isaac Spago. And I know...
Counsel McCleary, I'm just going to ask that we stick with a point of order or point of information?
Okay. Point of information, Madam Mayor. Is it possible for the town manager to reach out to the Town Health Department and ask for an update? And I would like, matter of fact, to be a part of that meeting with the Health Department, with the Chair of Public Safety, so that we could get to the bottom of, if the mold is still there. I know they went to the Health Department and put complaints in.
Counsel McCleary?
They find them when we updated the housing code.
Thank you, sir.
To make sure that people have safe, decent living housing.
I agree with that. If the Chair of Public Safety is willing to accept taking the lead and kind of getting stakeholders together with the assistance of the town manager, please add that to an action item, Clerk of Counsel, and we'll absolutely follow up, Madam. We're so sorry you're dealing with this, and we will do everything within our power to ensure that you have a voice in this process. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel McCleary, for your advocacy. All right. And if you could leave your number and your information with this Clerk of Counsel. Excellent.
And India, through the public chair, can we add the new building inspector that this council has hired?
We're going to bring order back to the dais. We are in citizen statements and petitions. Citizen statements and petitions.
Good evening, Gail Riley, Maple Avenue. I was just wondering if there's any way, like with this ordinance tonight, why isn't put on the agenda like all the other pertinent information? I had to go down to the town clerk's office. I went online to try to look it up in the charter to see if there were revisions were, you know, posted on the Town Charter. And I couldn't find it. When I went down to the town clerk's office, they were very lovely down there. And she couldn't even find it when she went online to try to see it. So I was just wondering why we always have to come down to the town clerk's office to get these, the information on public hearings? Why it can't just be put online with the agendas? And secondly, I'd like to say, I also went to the the assessor's office, and I want to say they were lovely in there and they were very helpful. And I just wanted to give kudos to them. Thank you.
Thank you. As a matter of record, this item by law, we are mandated to post ordinances and agendas in the town clerk's office. So that is the keeper of records. So that's where we must put things and post them. Additionally, this is enclosed in our packets and has been for every notice that has gone out. So please refer to the posted agenda. This redlined version and the amendments are enclosed in today's agenda and posted legally as required by state statutes last week when we put the notice out. Feel free to call the town manager or Clerk of Counsel to make sure that they can help navigate any issues so you can more, find it more clearly and cleanly. Thank you so much. But we are in citizen statements and petitions. We had one and two. If you are online, please raise your virtual hand and be recognized. Okay. No pressure. All right, hearing done. Moving right along to report of council subcommittees. The Governance Policy Economic Development Committee had a very robust meeting last month. I am handing the reins over to Counselor Cooper as he is the co- is now going to be the Chair of Governance Policy and Economic Development. Today, I will appoint you as sole Chair of the Governance Policy and Economic Development Committee. Apologies, no heads up. It's just a good time to do that. Sir, we do have some transitional memos in draft form that I will route to critical members and stakeholders that need to adhere to those particular items. But I have nothing to report. Clerk of Counsel, please work with Counsel Cooper directly. Again, as my last day as mayor is August 24, 11:59 PM. Oh, and my time is up. Moving into Finance, Budget, Audit, and Bonding.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. We will be meeting on Monday for 22 minutes. I'm going to ask Counsel Lloyd to take over as I will be getting deplaning off a plane from personal travel. So hopefully she's available to do 6:00 to 6:22. And she'd log on right after 6:22 to run the meeting. But at that meeting, we're going to talk about, hopefully, the increase in building fees to cover the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the commercial linkage fee, to help residents, just like the young lady that came up to talk about the Manor Houses. That's why the establishment of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was established to make sure that people have decent, clean, safe, affordable housing. And I'm most proud of it. We're going to talk about the status of the audit previous year and this year to get a status update and get the monthly financials. I don't know if the end... Yep, and last year's month end. And we're going to see what we put in for surplus for our honest, unfound balance. Last check, it was $3 million, but I'm sure that ebbs and flows every single day. And so we should be ending last fiscal year with a really good position. So hope everyone will come out Monday. It's in this building, in this room, starting at 6 o'clock. But again, I'm asking Counsel Lloyd from 6 o'clock to 6:22 to cover for me as I get off a plane. Happy to take any questions. See, Counsel Mayor has his hands up.
We're doing questions?
Oh, I don't know.
Counselor Mayor?
Yes, I was going to ask at our last meeting, subcommittee meeting, we brought up, we were going to forward, and I expect to see on the agenda tonight, and it isn't, about the senior housing on Blue Hills Avenue development. Is that dead now? Have they left town? What happened? Why didn't it come up on the agenda tonight?
So, Counsel Mayor, I can answer that. You can see the email from Attorney Ashley Moore. There was a provision of the tax abatement policy that when Gorman New York drafted, that was against state statute. And so thanks to Ashley Moore for doing her due diligence. They're doing their due diligence on the staff level. And when that's ready and prepared, that will come before the Finance Committee again to move to the council to make sure that we're okay with it. Hopefully, that satisfies your question.
Excellent. Thank you. Public Safety?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report, as the report was given on July 9 council meeting. On this month, unusually, our meetings are flip-flopped. So we will be having our Public Safety meeting for this month on August 13, where it normally precedes the council meeting. So there is no update as the meeting will be occurring at 6:00 PM, August 13, in these chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Workforce Development, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we are scheduled for a meeting tomorrow at 6:00 here in council chambers. But I will give you an update on the programs that were currently engaged. So the Summer Ridge Program concluded, completed on Friday. There were 14 students who participated. There were four Bloomfield businesses engaged. CVS, TJ Burritos, Strawberry Spa, and... What is that? The clothing store?
Burlington.
Burlington Coat Factory. I'm sorry. So we did have a last event activity where all the students were able to talk to some of the council members, talk to parents, talk to other town stakeholders. It was a great day, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to do it again next year. We also have the Dual Track CNA Program, which excelled this year. Eighteen of nineteen students received their CNA licenses. There was an anticipated continuation of that program. However, right now, CWP was anticipating funding from the state legislature. And as you all may know, there are some things going on that may prohibit that from occurring. They are looking for funding. Now, we also have another program. It's Carpenter's Apprenticeship Program, and that is being led by our town councilmen over there. And I think they will be starting Saturday. You want to briefly just give a little?
So the... Thank you. The trades program, I appreciate that. The trades program starts this Saturday. They're going to begin their OSHA 10. And then come Monday, they will go to Makerspace, and they will be getting trained through the Carpenter's Union Instructor that will come down, and they will be building dog houses. And we're going to try to work with, we haven't reached out to these other group yet, so I don't want to bring the name into it until I get a confirmation. But we're going to do something with these dog houses with a local agency in town that rescues animals. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we have one other program that is, you know, we're embarking. We have a vendor in our town, Stewart's Barber Shop. And one of our councilmen has worked his magic with this particular person, and they have developed an apprenticeship program. So Ken McCleary has worked with them, and I believe they'll be starting soon, 10 students. But I'm going to let Ken kind of briefly speak on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So the Roots and Cuts Collective at Stewart's Barber Shop Academy students will start on September 2 through June 26 of 2026, next year. There's morning sessions and afternoon sessions. They can choose whatever fits their schedule. They can, basically, they're going to get up to $5,000 in free equipment for cutting here. They get their license. At the barber shop, it is... He's registered and certified through the State Department of Education. So all of this is in partnership with the State Department of Education and the Town of Bloomfield, CWP. This is just a long-going effort for our kids who are not college-bound, but giving them the opportunity here in town to set whatever pathway they want. I'm so proud of this program, and Deputy Mayor, for bringing almost like a Bloomfield University for our youth, particularly people who are disconnected. And they're providing wraparound services through CWP, working with social services. I think we found India $10,000 extra to help support, find the wraparound services for our youth. So overall, good program. If the the local businesses, whether it's Burlington Coat Factory or TJ Burritos, doesn't work for a kid, retail doesn't work, and the trades doesn't work, and they want to go into barbering, they can do it. Young ladies and men are able to apply, and it's free of charge to the first 10 Bloomfield residents that apply. And it's right there in Winston Berry Mall. So we're supporting a small, local business here in town. So that's the update. And if you have any questions, feel free to stop by Stewart's Barber Shop in Winston Berry Mall, and he will be able to assist.
Thank you very much, and that concludes our report.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Moving into council business, is there a motion to...
Madam Mayor? Can I move that we suspend the rules to add the...
Oh, we will do that, sir? It's listed. I know what you're saying. That's item 2026-07, 03.
So we have to do that before council business? We have to suspend the rules so that this can happen? Because our council rules and procedure says that no item can be placed on the agenda the same night of the public hearing. And so because we have the public hearing that's on the agenda, we must suspend the rules in order to...
Yes. Typically, we do that at the item, but you're happy to do that right now before the consent agenda is addressed?
Yes, please, just so we don't run into any issues of... I'd rather be safe than be sorry.
Absolutely. Is there a consensus to suspend the rules for that particular item? Item 2026-03, as listed out in our council rules and procedures? Any objections?
No.
None.
Run a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mayor votes aye. The rules are suspended for 2026-03, so we can take action. Moving into consent agenda, are there any extractions? Are there any extractions? Are there any extractions for the consent agenda?
With option.
There's a motion on the floor? Is there a second? Counselor McCleary moved to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Counsel Lloyd. Any further discussion on the matter? Cannot discuss on that matter, actually.
Nope.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. The consent agenda is approved. Moving into old business, item 2026-03. Consider and take action regarding the revised Affordable Housing Trust Ordinance, Chapter 15-52-15-58. If the council wish to move, the following motion is in order. Move to adopt the revised Chapter 15 Planning, Zoning, and Development, generally Article 5, Sections 15-52-15-58, Affordable Housing Trust, a Bloomfield Code of Ordinance, pending final legal review and approval by our town attorney. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Counsel McCleary, seconded by Counsel Oliver. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counsel McCleary?
If Attorney Moore is prepared, through you, Madam Mayor, can she answer the question in the room? Oh, never mind. The motion says pending legal review. So I'm sure she will review this to make sure that we are in...
In accordance.
In accordance with the law. And if we're not, she'll bring it back in front of us.
Absolutely. Further discussion on the matter, item 2026-07. I would like to say thank you to Counsel McCleary. This is his brainchild. He is what we call a policy guru, and he often helps us navigate and construct very cutting-edge and progressive policy on behalf of the taxpayers. So thank you, sir, for bringing this to the forefront. I know we've done the pomp and circumstance already because this is an amendment to the current ordinance, but I do want to say thank you on behalf of those who need assistance for when it comes to housing and workforce housing. Yes, sir.
So this is, this is when policy have impact. Because I didn't plan this tonight when the young woman came up to talk about the Manor House. And this is why this Housing Trust Fund was established for residents like this. Because too often, the big elite business owners and landlords out of, whether Fairfield County or Westchester County in New York City, owns a lot of our real estate here in this community, and seniors, young people, don't have access to clean, safe housing. And so this trust fund is to be their voice. And so I'm so proud of it. I'm so proud of this council for supporting it when it was unpopular in the community. It was called the Trust Fund. It was, excuse me, a slush fund. It was said that I was trying to create a Minister of Finance to buy people off. This isn't about buying people off. This is about making sure people have clean, decent, safe housing. And if they can't have decent, clean, safe housing, then what is this government here for? And so I want to thank all of my colleagues on the dais. I want to thank our legal staff for really going through this to make sure that this is within the law so that we can get the meetings of the Housing Trust Fund up and going, because people are really hurting in this community. And this money just sitting there isn't going to do any justice. It needs to help people with rent control. It needs to help developers come in to be, who are looking for lowering their cost of construction, renters assistance, mortgage assistance, education. There's multiple things in this, in this fund that will be supported by our building permit fees and the commercial linkage fee. So anytime a corporation or business come in and try to develop in this town, a portion of those building fees will be going into this Housing Trust Fund to support our most vulnerable residents and people who need support for clean, safe, decent housing. So I want to thank, again, all of you for supporting this, and I can't wait for our Director of Social Services, Finance Department, Director of Economic Development, the town manager to really get to work and put the applications out so that people can really take advantage of these funds that are sitting here. So thank you all again.
Thank you. Awesome.
It's not from the end.
All right. Seeing none, call in the question. The Deputy Mayor has called the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The mayor votes aye. The motion passes. Thank you. Moving into new business, item 2026-07. Discussion on possible action regarding the proposed revised charter revision November 2025. Ballot question language and sending the ballot question to the November election. If my colleagues recall, in October 2024, we completed, accepted the entire charter revision report. It is time to meet that timeline deadline as we did in October to get it on the November ballot. So the following motion does have a two-part. And so the first item that we, I would entertain a motion for is to move to accept the ballot question language for the proposed revised charter. The ballot question language is as follows. Shall the Town of Bloomfield approve the proposed revisions to town... Oh, Ms. Howe, you're not on mute. Let me start again. Shall the Town of Bloomfield approve the proposed revisions to the Town Charter as set forth in the final report of the Charter Revision Commission, approved by the Town Council on October 16, 2024? I will have the honor of moving that. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel McCleary. Discussion on the question. Counsel Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that, very quickly, the movable, the moving of this motion for the Town Charter is a long time coming. And there was a lot of work that was done by folks who have intimate knowledge of the law and who took the time to volunteer to work on this. And I'm one who is for it, it shows that this council has taken the steps to move forward, to bring this town up to speed on a lot of things that may have lapsed, but now have been taken care of. And I'm proud to say that the people that I've worked with here in doing this and the people that have been chosen to do this type of work were the right people, and I'm happy and glad to support it and see it move forward.
Thank you, sir. Counselor McClary?
Yeah, I also agree, because a lot of the updates that the commission has done was to correct things in the charter that currently contradict itself and clarify it. One of the things, hate to bring it up because it was controversy, controversial, was the budget referendum versus a bond referendum, right? And so they outlined it, right? So there was a couple of months ago, and we're currently being sued for it. But it was, if you read the current charter as it stands, it contradicts itself. And so the Charter of Revision Commission, I want to thank the mayor for her foresight and vision to understand that the charter was outdated over, what, ten years? Eight years over its time? And the very same people who are criticizing us, some of the people who criticized us for doing this, were the people who wrote this document that contradicts itself. And so I look forward to it hopefully passing from the town residents because it is cleaning the document up, the constitution of Bloomfield up, and it's cleaning it up so that it protects the taxpayers from being sued. Because the council isn't being sued, the taxpayers of Bloomfield is being sued. We just are the body that is representing you, right? The twenty-two thousand, so the twenty-two thousand is being sued based on what's in this doc, this current document. And so hopefully, when it is passed, it's cleaned, and there should be no ambiguous language in the document to cause people to sue us. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for your leadership.
Thank you. Counselor Mahan?
Just a clarifying point on what Counselor McClary said, the twenty-two thousand are not being sued. The council, well, those that made their terrible misstep are the ones that are being sued. This lawsuit that's currently out there, and I won't speak too much on it, but the council is being sued, not the twenty-two thousand.
They just came and we've been here.
Um, can we, sorry, I think she's probably muting and unmuting them.
She's unmuting.
Yeah, just kick her off.
Don't do that because they don't think it's a conspiracy.
Thank you, Clerk of Council, fixing that tech issue. Any further discussion? Counselor McClary?
As I said, the taxpayers are being sued because the people that are suing us are asking for financial relief, which is going to come from the town residents, which comes from taxpayer dollars. So the residents of Bloomfield are being sued, point blank period.
Yep.
The poor decision-making could have prevented that.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving into our, any more questions on the motion on the floor regarding point one?
Move adoption.
The question has been called to move adoption for the ballot question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mayor votes aye, that question passes unanimously. Moving on, item number two for that item, twenty twenty-six dash zero three, is there a motion to move to approve the placement of the proposed revised charter on the ballot for the regular municipal election to be held in November twenty twenty-five? Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Counselor Cooper, seconded by Counselor McClary. Any further discussion on the part two of that item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Thank you so much. Moving on to our next item, report from the Town Manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Nope, it's on.
You want to turn it on? Yes, okay.
You have to turn the green light on.
We're all good.
Yeah, we're all good. Better not say that because they'll think it's a conspiracy.
You guys?
I need some instructions on how to press the green button.
Yeah, so I guess I'll start. Do you want to start, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
We all just want to give great acknowledgement to our departing mayor Danielle Wong. Who's done an exceptional job, and we want to thank her for every day that she has provided leadership to this group. There's tons of things that have happened in this town, and you are a great part of why it has happened. We also want to pay homage to our Clerk of Council, who has done an exceptional job as well, and she'll be leaving us for a little while, she'll be coming back, but we won't have the two of them for a while, and we just want to say thank you so much for all the hard work that you put in and making things happen in our town and for our council. You make us look good. You know, some of us needed a little help with that. No, I'm just playing. But, but really, really, honestly and truly, this is very special. And manager and Deputy Manager and Council, all of us wanted to say thank you to both of you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I guess we all go.
And we know how you are with them tears.
So I'm going to take the point of personal privilege to thank my friend. I said I wasn't going to cry because you made seven-year-old Danielle proud, man. The sleepless nights, the time away from those girls, your dedication to this community, whether people disagree with you or agree with you, you were fully committed to the role, and you did it your way, the best way that you knew how to do it. In Bloomfield, there are people who will never give you your credit for the work that you've done, whether it's the foresight of, because it wasn't symbolic, I told the reporter, it wasn't symbolic, like just feel-good stuff, it was real tangible change, change that this community didn't see from economic justice. When in twenty nineteen, when I lost, you had the foresight and leadership to reach out and say, what was that policy you were working on, the equity study? What was that about? And you did your homework, and it showed that white women and black women and women of all races was underpaid in this organization, and you took that fight on, not for you, not for nobody else, but because it was principle. When you look at people who, residents of this town who own businesses, and it showed that not one-half or one percent of people were doing the work and getting contracts in this organization and near government, you took that head on. When you looked and you heard people say that they didn't, they wanted a town center to represent them, you took it on. When you understood the importance of having public spaces upgraded, when people said it was a slush fund, you went out to the state and you fought for six million dollars for your hometown park because other communities was getting it. When it's housing affordability, I came to you and said, Mayor, we need to attack this. You had the foresight to say, we're going to do it. When it's the standardization of policies, you had the foresight to do it despite all the criticism, despite being heckled in the grocery store with your kids, you stood strong. And people aren't going to give you your credit, but guess what? History will tell the story. When that Winton Berry Mall or the town center is redeveloped, it's because Danielle Wong took it on, straight on. Madam Mayor, I am so proud to have served under you, ma'am, my friend, the long hours, you made this community proud, you made yourself proud, you did it with integrity. You can sleep at night, and I'm so proud of you, and I wish you the best of luck, whatever you do. You know, you hear the conspiracies that you want to run for public office? Hell, do what the hell you think is best for you, and you deserve it because you put the work in and you sacrifice for your family. And it's not bad to want higher office or to go live peacefully with your kids and see them grow up to be successful adults in this society. They deserve it, and you deserve it. So thank you, and I'm so proud of you, and I love you, my friends.
I will be brief and ditto all that, and I will publicly say to you what I said to you when I found out. Don't worry about the pundits, the critics, and the rhetoric. You go and be happy, you have served well, and you will love on those who love on you.
Amen.
I guess I, Madam Mayor.
Mine, I'll take just a brief moment to say that, you know, you're a great person. You know, my family, you know, thinks the world of you. I think that you are on point, you know, you're a great manager, you're even better person, right? And we get along, and you have wonderful ideas, you know? You have wonderful ideas, and you are able to, you know, work with, you know, people to make a cohesive team, and it takes more than one person to do it all. You've been at the forefront, no doubt about it, but when you're able to take people and get people together and rally them around some things, that's when it shows a good leader, right? Your leadership skills are awesome. I'm a little older than you, but, but you know, hey, listen, you can learn something from anybody, anyone. And, and, you know, lastly, I'll be real short, my wife likes you, and so that counts for a lot in my household, counts for a lot. She's a very good judge of character and of people, and she likes you, so I'm good with that, right? Thank you.
So I do want to thank you as well for believing in me and the trades program when a lot of people didn't believe in it. And like everybody else said, not everybody knows all the background. Before I even got politically involved, I sat there in those seats, and about forty people, forty residents from Bloomfield in the trades that live here in town, we came in here marching away that we wanted a one-in-four resident requirement on that roster library. And you supported the people of this community, and it put twenty, it put twenty-one people to work in this town that worked on that library. You took that money from taxpayers and you reinvested it into the community. You know, that speaks volumes, so, you know, people can say what they want to say. I know, and a lot of the people know what you've done, and you sacrificed a lot of time with your family, and now it's time for you to go ahead and give that time back to them. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I speak? Do you hear me?
Yes.
I want to, from the other end of, I'm not there tonight, but I would like to add my congratulations for the job you've done. I've been around longer than anybody and experienced many mayors in the town of Bloomfield, and you have done as good a job as any of them. Thank you. I really, I think you'd say, well, I grant you run a darn good meeting, and you need to have order, and you do a good job with it. It's always tough, democracy is not easy, and this is an unpaid job, there's a little thanks for it. I mean, you may wonder why you put up with all of the stuff you have to put up with, but the town of Bloomfield thanks you profoundly for the job you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I ask you guys to do.
May I?
Sure.
Okay. I do want to also thank you for your service. We haven't always agreed, ninety-nine percent of the time, we did not agree, but I can always admire, as Joe's laughing, Joe, ninety-nine percent for you too, Joe. I can always admire when someone steps up to the plate to serve and to, and to give, give their time selflessly, because we all know that this is very time-consuming, that it takes a lot to give to the community, and it takes a lot to even want to put yourself in a position to serve. You open yourself up to scrutiny, you open yourself up to criticism, you open yourself up to so many things, including being away from your family, and you have, you know, you have two daughters that you're raising. So I, I do want to thank you as a colleague, thank you for lively engagements, for representing alongside me, and for just stepping up to the plate to serve.
Thank you. I asked you guys, I told you guys I wanted an Irish exit, just no pomp and circumstances. Mr. Town Manager, thank you for giving my colleagues your report time, I appreciate that. This has been an honor, one of the honors of my life. This is my hometown, I'm so proud of everything that we've done together. I'm so proud of the legacy that we are leaving for future generations, like my kids and your grandkids and your kids, to benefit from, and I'm not going far, folks, I'm going to be right here to support you day in, day out. We talk all the time, there's a lot of things going on behind the dais as far as making sure projects get done and the vision is implemented, and I have all the faith in all of you amazing people that I'm sitting next to right now. You guys are good people, and that's why it makes it so easy to leave, because you guys are going to pick it up, and you guys are going to take it up, and I love you and I believe in you. Thank you so much. I, Mr. Town Manager, you ready for, do you have a report, sir?
I do, I do, I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, my fingers can now work the buttons without a miracle, okay? Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry. Oh, okay, well, you know I ain't done yet. Okay, we ready for me now? We're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Counselors, citizens of Bloomfield, and all staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I will be briefing my report. First and foremost, Madam Mayor, thank you for your leadership and support throughout my tenure. I have grown tremendously under your stewardship and look forward to leading the staff to continued success in all we do. To quote our beloved Tina Turner, I will simply say, you are simply the best. I also want to take this opportunity to also thank Ms. India Lloyd, our dedicated Clerk of, I keep saying that. And I literally wrote Lloyd instead of Rogers on this. Yeah, 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 so I keep doing that, and I do it less in staff meetings. So I would also like to take this opportunity to also thank Ms. India Rogers, our dedicated Clerk of Council for the last seventeen years, for the excellence she has provided. For the excellence that she has provided in her tenure, we are bringing on a new Clerk of Council so that India can function in her responsibilities as our newly appointed Director of Operations and Communications. Thank you. Under Arabella, I appreciate Counselor Merritt asking his question regarding Arabella's present status and the response provided by Counselor McClary. I am hopeful in the near future, a special meeting will be able to address their requests for consideration. Under disciplinary matters, I usually don't get into a lot of disciplinary matters or operational matters, but I am dealing with a couple of serious matters out of our, out of our police department involving law enforcement and sworn personnel, and I'll keep the council updated. Town Clerk, Ms. Anna Posniak, our recently hired Town Clerk, has decided to leave the town of Bloomfield effective fourteenth August twenty twenty-five. Anna was a tremendously valued member of Team Bloomfield for the very short time she was with us. I wish her and her family the very best in all she does. I know she will continue to meet success in her next chapter. Ms. Angelica Candelaria and her clerks are prepared to fill in the gap until the new Town Clerk is settled. I do anticipate the new Town Clerk arriving on the ground two September twenty twenty-five, so just in a short time, we'll have someone who'll take the ball and continue to run with it. I will be out of town the next, on Wednesday through Thursday, looking to come back Thursday midnight and be here for work on Friday, and also be part of the ribbon-cutting on Saturday, as well as our farewell to, not so much a farewell, but being there to welcome our veterans who are going to a baseball game at our local park, Dunkin' Donuts Stadium, and we're doing that for our veterans because we understand that their service is to be valued and appreciated. So I'm happy to be able to put them on a bus and get them over there to have some fun and have a good time with each other, okay? So here's my big ask, and if you have seat belts, I ask that you please utilize them right now, especially for Counselor McClary, because we have a serious gap right now, and we have a serious gap right now as it pertains to our ability to be successful in FOIA requests. So I am asking the council to authorize up to ninety thousand dollars to cover a paralegal over the next year. Bloomfield is experiencing an unprecedented amount of FOIA requests, which I don't believe is faced by any town our size nor cities multiple times our size. Answering the call is going to cost money. The stress that these requests have been placing on our staff has reached a critical point. We do not have an option to put FOIA requests on the back burner. Each request deserves our professional effort and attention. However, right now, we are beyond our capability to manage your requests as well as continue to work for the betterment and advancement of Bloomfield, which is our primary objective. And to give you an understanding of what I'm talking about, just this past Friday, just this past Friday, one individual, and it could have been twelve individuals, it doesn't matter, but one individual put in twelve requests for FOIA information. And each of these requests have multiple components to them, which when you look at it, uh, it it can take literally, um, full-time staff to dedicate to this alone over a month to to engage in this. And and the law says when the information is is requested, that we have to make it a priority along with the rest of our jobs. And, uh, and I'm concerned about our ability to to do so with our present staffing because, um, this requires a lot of work. And to have a paralegal to assist us would actually cut down on on some of the fees associated with legal expenses expenses because we would have someone who would be doing some of the review before it gets to the final review of, uh, of our, um, town attorney, uh, then for release to the individual. So, uh, I know we need to talk about the mechanics of what that looks like. But right now, I'm I'm saying we're in a tough situation and, um, I can look to hire someone and then we take on additional expense of of benefits. Or we can look to get through this through a short-term, um, uh, paralegal, uh, to assist us. I'm only gonna be entertaining someone who's very seasoned, uh, probably about 15 years of experience, knows exactly what they're doing and, um, and probably will be able to, um, really, uh, reduce, uh, maybe some some oversight, uh, expenses, uh, associated with, uh, legal review as well if we get the right person. So, um, that's our situation, folks. I wish I had some better news. Uh, but, uh, we just keep with this onslaught and, uh, I've never seen anything like this before. But, um, you know, we're we're being requested so many things that that, you know, it's it's people's rights to request it. So I don't want to be viewed in any way, uh, in opposition to anyone who's making a request is their right. But, um, but that comes with, um, a a a need that we don't have now to to help us. And I'm asking the council to please give that some some serious thought. Uh, because right now we're at a deficit and and, um, we have another FOIA complaint that was filed, uh, by, uh, um, Attorney Needleman against the town, uh, seeking some information. And, uh, so thi- this is not stopping anytime soon. So, um, we need to support and and I please ask for your your thoughts and consideration regarding this item. And subject to your questions and or concerns, uh, that's my report, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you so much, sir. And, uh, the Deputy Mayor and I have been in transition discussions. And so I'm happy to put this on the agenda for the a special meeting that needs to occur after my departure. Councilor Mahan.
Uh, I, um, just on the whole idea of FOIA requests, um, I'm sure, you know, we'd have less these oversight, less expenses related. If folks were just allowed to fill the FOIA requests without any hindrance, that is an idea that might be helpful. Um, you know, we're we're also having these FOIA requests because there's a lack of transparency. We've seen throughout, especially throughout the last few months. So I think these things could help. I don't know if we need to spend $90,000. I think just a little bit more work on our end to make sure that things are a bit more transparent for the public. We can avoid a lot of these expenses, a lot of the complaints that come from, uh, from these oversights.
May I respond? May I respond?
Um, Mr. Town Manager, you have the floor.
Yeah. Um, uh, Councilor Mahan, have you seen any of the FOIA requests which have been presented to the town that you speak of that, uh, could be avoided? Have you seen any of them, sir?
I have not seen all of them. I have seen some. I have not seen all of them.
Okay, I'm I'm talking specifically about the 12 that were filed last week, Friday. That is the point of this discussion and our inability to to keep up. Have you seen any of those, sir?
If you'd like to share it, I'd be very happy to take a look at it. But once again, now we're getting back into the same conversation transparency. How would I know about these 12 requests if you don't share with me, Town Manager?
Okay, so the point is you you haven't seen them, so you you don't really have a concept as to how involved they are and and what it's going to take. And and if it, in fact, it is a matter of transparency or not, i- is that a fair summation?
I believe it can be, but I won't know until you share it. I mean, on just on your end alone, I I recall asking you specifically for items that I've asked previous town managers and you even instructed me to, uh, make a FOIA request on several instances. And with and instances which I could have got that information from you and I have got that information from previous town managers. So, you know, we do have to, we do have to be very mindful, if I may finish, without interruption. I usually get interrupted, but I can finish without that. Um, we have to be very mindful of these things when we're making statements such as what you made, Town Manager. Because like I said, you have even instructed me to make a FOIA request, which, I mean, would only put more burden on, uh, or exacerbate the issue that you're speaking about today.
Thank you. Counselor Lloyd?
Thank you. Um, just to clarify, this the the ask is not about transparency or not. It is to fulfill the requests that have come in so that transparency can happen. Um, as it relates to you responding to the Town Manager, I think that's a, um, yourself, Councilor Mahan and Town Manager question, if you want to have privy to those requests or have, um, weekly or whatever cadence you want notification of them. That's not a general practice since I've been here. Maybe because you've been on, you have longer tenure than I do. You may have seen that happen previously. I'm not sure. But the question on the floor or the ask is, do we want to consider, um, affording $90,000 for a paralegal? I'm not sure, Mr. Town Manager, if you're asking for someone to come on full-time as an employee. Are you asking for a durational person or are you asking for someone who will be a temp? Right? Because employee or durational is indicative of well as benefits. But a temp, uh, through an agency or otherwise, then will, um, not cost us the expense of benefits. So that's my direct, uh, response to your ask.
And and Counselor Lloyd, thank you for that. And I am, um, having our HR director right now looking to temp agencies and their ability to provide the type of person that I I think will get us through this period. Especially, uh, when we have, you know, we're gonna be coming up on on an election. We're gonna be having a a brand-new Town Clerk here again. And, um, and I can tell you, without going into a lot of detail, um, this, uh, amount of activity, uh, related to FOIA and FOIA alone, uh, absolutely consumed, uh, our our last Town Clerk. And 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 a Town Clerk's primary duties, uh, are many. And and this very critical, uh, important role that plays in the town. But to have someone at that level just consumed with FOIA alone, uh, was detrimental to other aspects of the the purpose of the Town Clerk's office. So we're at that point now where I think a temporary solution will help us get through it. And, uh, and if we have to reassess at that point, uh, we can do so, but right now the need is urgent.
Okay, um, we have
Thank you.
Thank you. We have passed the business portion of our agenda. Thank you so much, Mr. Town Manager, for bringing that to the attention of this body. It will be taken up in the process on the next Town Council meeting. And that will be up to the body present to ensure, decide, um, based off the recommendations that the HR Director puts forth by the Town Manager. Any more questions for the Town Manager as it relates to his report, folks? Yes, Mr., um, sorry, Council Oliver.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a question regarding that. Is there, um, when FOIAs aren't answered in time, does that create legal fees? And will the $90,000 basically help offset us from all these legal fees if we do not get these answered in time?
I I would have to really rely upon, uh, our legal, um, um, profession's, um, you know, expertise to to speak to that. I do not believe it would rise to the level of a $90,000 fine. But, uh, but what we do lose is is more than $90,000 because we lose confidence in our ability to to execute. So we need resources to ensure our ability so that the the public is is confident in our ability to execute and and have no concerns, uh, about transparency, which is something that I know is is flouted uh, uh, floated around a lot in an effort to attack. So, um, I I would say it's well worth the investment to ensure that, uh, the public knows that we're we're answering the call when called upon.
I agree. Thank you.
Councilor McClary?
Thank you. Um, and it's, this is a a statement before the question. It's not just a matter of like the level of it, but it's just like staff time in the Town Clerk's office. The Town Clerk is the Chief Information Officer. So that means, uh, land records, that means, uh, marriage license, that means deeds. That means a whole bunch of other stuff that you go into the Town Clerk office to get. And if her staff is inundated with vigorous I think the last time I emailed her and asked her like how many FOIs we had outstanding, it was like in one week she had 30 and her comment to me was, and I know she's not here to defend it, but her comment was like, I'm spending all my time focusing on FOIs and I'm not getting the other things done. And so the very people who are out there saying that the conspiracy theories that it's she's leaving because
Is there a question?
Yeah, I'm getting there. Um, it's not that, it's just that it's just inundated with FOIs every single day by bad actors who don't want to see this town move forward and they throw transparency out there. As the residents that are in here, everything comes on the agenda, everything has to be voted on. Every committee meeting is public, everything is public. So when they ask or he mentions transparency, ask a follow-up question. What is it that you're not getting that you want to see? Because all meetings are public, all votes are taken in the public eye, everything, every dollar. We have an open checkbook that
Is there a question?
On the website. So, Mr. Manager, the $90,000, what about the three people in the Town Clerk's office? Are they not able to? Oh, they're union. Thank you, Counselor Lloyd. Never mind.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on. Um, this debate will be taken up when the item is on the agenda. Please see your Deputy Mayor slash next mayor, um, for any questions or concerns you may have on the next agenda.
I hope you drafted, sir. Um, so just a brief report that I had prepared. Um, again, we, uh, the Deputy Mayor and I have started our transition discussions. Um, I plan to provide a list of outstanding things on my plate, hand them over and recommend the Deputy Mayor delegate to the best stakeholder. Um, such as different relationships that we have at the state, who's best to maintain those relationships. Make sure that our, um, our grant opportunities in different state agencies don't fall through the cracks. So this is just, this does go beyond just the the business of the taxpayers. We do also have other initiatives, um, just hanging out there just because of our different relationships that we've built over the years. So again, um, I look forward and continue our conversation, sir. And having a smooth transition in the August 25th special meeting to be determined. Um, all right, awesome, guys. So we have an executive session. So can I have a motion to go into executive session with the Town Council, the Town Attorneys, our Deputy Town Manager, Anatasha Kingling, and I think I said our Town Manager. Um, Town Attorney, did I miss anybody else? Is Daryl coming in? No, he says absolutely not. Moved by Counselor Lloyd, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any objections to moving into executive session? We are in executive session.